All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty. We'll now call the meeting to order and let the record show we have Commissioners Smith, Brown, Shepherd, and Montoya present. Wild is not here at the moment. So we will go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. This commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. The format for the public hearing will follow the following procedures for each application. Presentation by applicant, presentation by city staff, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, discussion of hearing among the commission members and a decision. If anyone would like to give public testimony, there are some general rules. No person shall be permitted to speak at the public hearing until the person is recognized by the chairman. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you can ask them during your turn for public testimony, and the applicant can respond to them during the rebuttal. Or the commission can ask the question of staff during their discussion. If you'd like to speak, please sign up at the signup sheet for the application that you wish to give public testimony for. No person shall be permitted to testify at the public hearing unless such person has signed their full name and written the residential address on the signup sheet. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone before the presentation begins. Commissioner Wild, it's okay, sir. So let the record show the Commissioner Wild is here as well, please. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, number staff.
All right, thank you. Onto the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we may move an item to the consent agenda. At this time, I don't see any items to move to the consent agenda with CUPFY two zero two four zero 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 six with the late submission from ACHD and other items for discussion on that matter. Item A, however, is the approval of the minutes from February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. In March twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, I will recuse myself from voting on the approval of the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty four minutes since I was absent from that meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Wild.
I too was absent for spring break for that, so I recuse myself from that vote.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
I move approval of the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four meeting and the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty four meeting.
I have a motion, a motion from Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chairman's second motion.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any further deliberation? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No noes?
Aye with regard to February.
Same as well, thank you. All right, new business. Item A, CUPFY two zero two four dash zero zero six, conditional use permit. Darcy Blazak of Blazak Diagnostic and Automotive is requesting a conditional use for automotive repair at three six six zero West Chinon Boulevard, Ada County, R two seven three four five zero two eight eight zero, located in the C one Highway Commercial Zoning District. Again, the format for the hearing, there will be a presentation by the applicant, city staff will present a report. There will be a public hearing, any rebuttal by the applicant, closing the public hearing, and then discussion among the commissioners, and then a decision. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Again, would you please state your name and address for the record when you're at the podium? Thank you.
So.
Yes.
My name is Andrea Nilson, one four six one East Roanoke Drive, Boise, Idaho. And I'm presenting on behalf, on behalf of Darcy Blazak, the applicant, and Toucan Development, the owner of the property, who is on Zoom call with us. So we, we believe at this point, we've submitted all the requested documents. We've been working with Hannah to make sure that we get everything in that we need to get in. We think we've accomplished that. The property was previously utilized as an automotive repair facility. Toucan Development brought, bought the property, put her own Clearview Cleaning Company into the property, sold her company to KBS Cleaning Company, who has just recently relocated out of the property. So it's been vacant for, well, roughly about three months, I would say, since we started this. There are some questions and concerns regarding the access points on Chindon. We understand that, as well as some of the access points on Osage. The property is just a point, just point seven of an acre. There are two access points on Chindon, two on Thirty-seventh, and then the alley on Osage. Some of the questions that had come up during our application and some of the email questions from Hannah that she asked us come to come and be prepared to speak about today. Are the preferred circulation route onsite with the options of either one or both accesses closed on Chindon? Which access point would we prefer to be closed, and how would you and your customers flow through the site in either case? We would prefer that the access point on Chindon closest to Thirty-seventh be the access point that's closed. I think that makes the most sense. It's literally on the quarter of Thirty-seventh and Chindon. So we, we don't see an issue in closing that access point. It's probably safer for, for everybody involved. The next question from Hannah was with the same question as above. With the addition of ACHD requiring one or both accesses be closed on Thirty-seventh Street? You know, while we wouldn't love to have that happen, they're very close, and we understand that we're going to lose one one way or the other, so we're okay with that. Uh, let's see here. I think we answered her third question. Proposal to screen the HVAC unit. I think we're willing to look into that if that's a requirement of the conditional use permit. We haven't investigated other businesses along the same route to see if they also have screened in HVAC units, but it's, it's open for discussion. The proposal to street, screen the trash enclosure. We don't currently have a dumpster on site. Nobody else that backs up to Osage has a dumpster. There's a dumpster that is close to our property that appears to be ours if you drive by, but that's, I think it's a twisted kitchen, and then Audio Lab and Pon One, none of them have trash enclosures shielding the dumpster because it's really behind the property on Osage and not visible to, to people passing by. There's obviously some requests here for landscaping. We think we can accomplish some of that with the closure of the two access points with some planter boxes out in front. We did, we did submit a landscape plan that involves some bushes rather than trees along the front because we only have, you know, very narrow area between the curb without ripping up the entire parking lot to put in trees along the boulevard. And we have a very, it would be impossible for us to back cars in and out if we take that additional room for landscaping. And I know everybody loves the Dogtopia Building. I was part of that project. And I think at some point in time when this building gets redeveloped and scraped, then it's very easy to move it up to the edge because you're starting with a blank slate. But we're working with what we have here, and you know, Blazak's have been in business for a long time. They're great upstanding citizens in the community. And we would like to see them bring their business to Garden City. Do you have any questions for me before I step away?
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, yes, ma'am. I have several questions that are related. The first ones have to do with the access issues, as you're aware and you've just alluded to. The high ITD on Chindon, they're responsible for that, and they have left it up to us to decide whether you close both accesses or one of them. And since they control it, they actually control which one has to be closed. And so I have one question. So we still have it before us whether we should, if I understand what you said, you would prefer to keep that one access that's on Chindon, is that correct?
Correct.
In other words, your, your preferences for us to go back and tell ITD what we required you to do is just what they saw it as a requirement, just the one access, and that would be the Western access, is that correct?
Correct.
Thirty-seventh is a little bit different. Thirty-seventh is controlled by ACHD. And they have actually designated the one that will have to be closed.
Okay.
So that will be the one that's closest to Chindon.
That makes sense.
And that's more southward. The reason for that is because those are the two accesses that are closest to the intersection.
Agreed.
And so that's what they're doing. So so what you would prefer, if I put it what you're indicating, with that regard to access on Thirty-seventh and on Chindon, your choice is to us to decide to let you keep the one on the east on Chindon.
Correct.
And then you will keep the one access that's the furthest sort of to the north.
Correct.
Furthest away from Chindon on Thirty-seventh.
I think, I think, you know, eliminating both access points on Chindon really puts this property, the owner and the businesses at a severe disadvantage. Again, I think at some point in time when there's a complete redevelopment of this property, which we all know there will be at some point, just not today. I think at that point in time, maybe that works out because then you can put the building up on the street like the design code requires, the parking in the back, and you don't necessarily need that access point up front. But I think if you, if you take both access points away on Chindon, it really, really devalues this property for the owner and makes it very challenging for a business to be successful on Chindon with no access.
Right. That, that's good. And thank you very much for summing that. Now I want to move on to the, the issue of landscaping. If I understand it, then what you're requesting is for us to in effect waive the requirement for the trees and let you substitute bushes or something for that. Is that correct?
Correct. We, the, then, the space that we have for trees is so narrow, and I believe, and Sylvia, you can chime in if you, if you want to add to this. But when Sylvia purchased the building and moved in, we initially tried planting trees on the boulevard, but they all died because they were immediately trying to go under the street and under the sidewalk. And so our, we're all about beautifying the property, and we want to make it look nice. And, and I think you guys have done a great job up and down this corridor of doing that. But trees out there, I just don't think they'll survive.
Let me ask you a question, then. If, let's suppose that we've managed to do that. Do you include putting some kind of bushes in planters or something along Osage?
Yes, we do, along the closed access point.
So you would, that's where you would limit it to.
Yep. Sylvia wants to say something here.
May I, commissioners?
If you would, please state your name.
Yes. My name is Sylvia Hampel, and I am the owner of the building at three six six zero North Chindon Boulevard, Toucan Development, and also.
So if you could just hold on, please, and, and then we will give you the opportunity to speak.
Okay, I saw. I think I understand that, and I want to, I talked about the shielding around the dumpster. And you are correct, we've dealt with this issue. Osage is a special problem. It's a problem for us, and it's a problem for the highway district. Because it, actually, the highway district, they're doing us all the favor. They're treating it in this particular application as an alley and applying their standard for alleys. The fact is, it's designated a street because of the classification that had to be given to it when it was accepted from Garden City. But that's another story, and it has totally inadequate right of way, and it gives you inadequate space. So I understand that, but there's also a requirement in there if you read it for shielding around the AC unit. Are you making a request that that be waived as well as the, the shielding that would go around the trash dumpster?
I may have to defer to Sylvia on that. I, I have not inspected the, the situation on the HVAC unit, and, and we don't have a dumpster there today. So can she chime in on this or no?
Good, Chairman.
And you're the property owner, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Would you state your name again? I'm sorry. And then, yes, we can adjust the. Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Hampel. Thank you so much for letting me talk. Yes, so we have done some preliminary research on this. We had Western Heating and Air come out, and we're more than happy to take a look at this. One of the issues with shielding the air units is what they told me is that it could limit the performance. We can certainly look into it further, like trying to like maybe kind of put like some sort of gating or fencing, but anything that gets too close or too tight to the units will actually prohibit performance and can cause a lot of issues. We just actually had them out on the property, doing a full inspection on all of our AC units because of this, and also just our heating units. Certainly something we're willing to take a look at. We just don't have a solution at this point in time as to what we could do that would still not really prohibit the AC from flowing correctly and not cause an issue with the condensation. So we're certainly open to that. It's something we would need to look into. As far as the trash goes right now, there, we don't have a dumpster on site. There's enough space that I think if the new tenant needed a dumpster, she could probably put one inside the garages and just roll it out. So I don't really think that that's an issue for us right now. And then as far as the landscaping goes, yeah, Andrea is correct on that. When I first got the building and purchased it, I've been in there about eight years. We went through this with Garden City as well. We've been, we've been obviously in the community for a long time and, and really just enjoyed being there. The problem with the tree planting, and we had this issue before come up for us, is that just like Dre was saying, we don't really have the space to put any trees there unless we maybe put them inside of, like a big barrel or bucket. But then obviously that outgrows its space. So what we did when we moved in, and sadly, KBS kind of let that go by the wayside. We did plant a bunch of beautiful planter boxes. I still have photos of those, I think I can find those. But, and, and everybody seemed to be really happy with that. We put them up by the frontage of our doors. We put them like all over where we, you know, had the, the cement and the sidewalk and the pavement. So we just put a bunch of beautiful planter boxes, and we just planted them every year. So every year we just had flowers.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Are there any other question, any other questions for the applicant? I do have a question, and this has to do with the landscaping along Thirty-seventh. And in the ACHD report as well as the report that you submitted with your landscape plan that shows the, the stars and the circles? And I don't know who's best to answer this. But it does look, if you look at that aerial, that the neighboring property on the left-hand side has grass and trees that seem to be doing well. Does the gas station? Can was staff be able to pull up the?
Same side.
So, and it, the reason I'm asking is it seems to be the same situation where you have the, the sidewalk adjacent to the road, and then you do have landscaping between the sidewalk and the asphalt. And I haven't gone by recently, but it does look like in that photo that those trees are doing well. Do you have irrigation in that landscape island?
I don't think so.
So.
You know.
And so is the plan to hand water everything to make sure that there, because nothing's going to survive if you don't have irrigation unless you're going to hand water. So what's the plan there?
Well, and I think, I think that is our plan with the planter boxes. So obviously, when we close off those two access points, we want to make it very clear. We don't want to put a post with the chain and then hope nobody drives through it. So I think our plan there is to put, you know, large, lengthy planter boxes on the closed access point on Chindon as well as the closed access point on Thirty-seventh to create that green kind of barrier at the corner. So that, that was kind of our plan to solve it. I also think they have a lot more room on that side. If, if we have to do something similar to that, we're going to have to tear up a significant amount of the property, and then I think we run into a problem with parking because I don't think we can park the, the people on the west side of the building and actually have them be able to back out without backing into, you know what I'm saying? We'd have to widen that berm, and then we have a, then we have a circulation problem, a big one, because we're closing two access points.
Okay, and if I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to add, we, when I was there operating Clearview Cleaning Services, we had a company that maintained those for us. So we just hired an outside company that would come in, they'd plant the boxes for us, and then they would come by twice a week and water them for us, and so that's how we maintain that.
Okay, so you're anticipating that that would be in agreement or someone would keep, continue to maintain that landscaping that you would install? And then you mentioned that, if I heard you correctly, you are planning on putting landscaping along Osage, is that correct?
It would also be the planter box that, that is going to be on the closed access point. So it would be right at the corner of Chindon and Thirty-seventh, not Osage, sorry.
Okay, so nothing on Osage?
No.
Okay. And so you're proposing no trees whatsoever, only shrubs and bushes?
Correct.
Right, I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
That has prompted, your, your comment has prompted another question. And I didn't quite explain it thoroughly enough. And I apologize for that. But not only does ITD going to require that the one of the access that you can see right there on the picture that's closest to Thirty-seventh is going to have to be closed. The one they're going to allow is to the right of this picture. And it is only going to be able to be used as an entrance. It's not able to used as an exit. So the cars that come in on that part of it, if you look, if you go and look at the building, some of the cars that they're going to be servicing at this facility enter in through doors that are in the front. Those cars, am I correct? They're going to have to exit, they're going to have to go around that side, which is, so they're going to have a traffic lane of traffic over there where the other building is able to have trees. Is that correct?
So, and I might need Darcy, the owner operator, to chime in on this, but once they go in, they would back out, go under the canopy where you see those two red Clearview cleaning vans kind of sticking out under the canopy and then exit out onto Thirty-seventh.
Yeah, so you're going to have to have a traffic lane on your property between where the landscaping and there's also parking around on that side too, is that correct?
I think not, not between the canopy and the landscape buffer. I mean, I think there's cars just parked there right in this aerial, but I don't think it's a designated parking space between the, the reader board sign and the canopy. I don't think there's a designated parking space between there.
All right, but there, there will be a traffic lane there, right?
I mean, it's.
Cars that are exiting.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I did a question.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you. Could you please help me understand what you mean by the dumpster? Like, right now you don't have one, but you will have one where you'll store it inside and then roll it out.
So there, there is a covered area in the back of the building as it sits today where you can pull in and then the garage doors come up. There's a covered area there. I think that could honestly actually serve as a dumpster enclosure because when you, when you have it there, you can't see it from Osage. But it's not officially like an isolated dumpster with, like you would see at a Starbucks with a full trash enclosure and doors.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is conditional use permit two thousand and twenty four dash zero 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 six located at three six six zero West Chindon Boulevard. To keep my presentation a little bit short and not go through a lot of redundant materials, I'll just keep to the point regarding circulation, access, and landscaping tonight. Garden City has had a dialogue with ITD and ACHD concerning the safety of multiple access points along not only Chindon, but also the local roadways in which ACHD governs. ITD has indicated that for safety purposes, they would prefer and endorse limiting access onto Chindon Boulevard, utilizing Osage Street and the numbered cross-section streets, in this case, West Thirty-seventh. Utilizing Osage and the numbered streets as access to businesses along Chindon will assist in the overall traffic flow of Chindon, allowing for better regional traffic movement as well as enhancing the pedestrian and bicycle safety along Chindon and local roadways. Staff has already drafted a condition requiring the closure of both of the accesses along West Chindon Boulevard per ITD's comments. But there is no condition regarding the Thirty-seventh Street closures as ACHD's comments were submitted as a late exhibit prior to the commission's packet being released. The commission will need to create a condition in accordance with ACHD's recommendation tonight and edit the drafted condition that staff has made regarding the accesses on Chindon if need be. With the closure of the three accesses, circulation within the site is obviously a concern. However, closure of these accesses could be done via landscaping, which the site currently is deficient in. And as ITD did not require full reconstruction of the Chindon right-of-way and streetscape, landscaping could be utilized as part of, of that closure. Put it to street view so we can see. All frontages, frontages being Chindon Thirty-seventh and Osage Street are currently lacking their required street trees. And the site does not provide the required five percent landscaping per code. By installing the required landscaping as part of the access closures for at least the Chindon access curb cuts, it could help bring the application into further code compliance. There has been discussion here tonight regarding the potential waiver of the street trees on both, or not both, but on all Chindon Thirty-seventh and Osage Street. As this is not technically a new development, it's not technically a redevelopment. There are no additions proposed and no site modifications proposed other than what was required as part of this conditional use permit. There is the option to waive the street trees. However, there are also alternative code substitutions in our eight for I section of code, and I can bring that up here shortly if we need to discuss it. And, but essentially, the way the substitutions work is for every class two or three street tree required, two additional class one trees can be substituted. So, for example, on Chindon, if there are five class two or three street trees required, like there are now, then it would be ten class one trees, which would help in not having as large of trees, potentially not having as much water consumption. There is also a shrub substitution. So for every tree required, there would be ten shrubs necessary. So with five trees required on Chindon and fifty shrubs would be required onsite to help with that substitution. And that's not specifically limited to Chindon. It would also apply on Thirty-seventh and Osage. However, with that being said, all of the required landscaping areas do require an automatic controlled irrigation system, and that is in our code, and that's specifically eight for I three. So of, of the required street trees, of the required shrubs, and of that required five percent landscaping area, then the irrigation, automatic irrigation is required. So of, of the required street trees, of the required shrubs, and of that required five percent landscaping area, then the irrigation, automatic irrigation is required. I didn't get very far in the code search. Let's see, and so staff, when talking about the trash enclosure, was referring to the street scape. Uh or street view of Google. If I can move it, so um. This dumpster that I am. I'll show it on Zoom as well. This dumpster that staff referred to in our staff report um. Has been in this location for what Street View has identified since two thousand and eleven. Um. So that is where the comments came from regarding the, the dumpster and needing to screen it. And staff has talked with Republic Services um regarding the potential ability to. Uh relocate the dumpster and provide screening, in which case they, the Republic Services said. Um it is possible, it would need to be an identified exact location, and as long as it met their standards, which is a twelve by twelve enclosure and a. A hundred twenty degree uh like gate radius, that could be staked, that would meet their, their standards, so. Um in regards to that trash enclosure. In the dumpster, it could be relocated, there are general conditions in the decision document regarding. Screening of the dumpster. On site. From the public right-of-ways. And I, I guess in, in regards to the dumpster, um staff does just have a question to the applicant is. Um how much trash do you anticipate and what is your uh trash plan? Um and that can be discussed and rebuttaled after my presentation, but with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman.
I'm trying to understand. Who's dumpster that is, cuz it just seems like it's randomly there cuz they're on the corner, this, would it be the person on the other side of those stages or that businesses?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I, and since I reviewed the application, I inter. Interpreted this dumpster to be, belong to the applicant's property because it is on their property. I think there could be confusion with another dumpster on an adjacent property, but um this dumpster is. Clearly belonging to the other. Property, so I, I don't know at this point um whose dumpster this is. Uh this Google Street View was from August of two thousand twenty-three. And just going back into historical street views, this is. August two thousand and eleven and it hasn't really changed its location too much. I didn't know it could do that.
Thank you, it just seems like cuz it's on their property. Trying to figure out who's it would be. And then my second question, so. Staff is also recommending to, and the ITD is, what I understand is recommending that both of the access points on Chindon be closed.
So in, in your drafted condition. Document, staff did. Condition that both accesses on Chindon be closed per ITD's recommendation. However, ITD also recommended alternatives, in which case. Only one of the closed, one of the accesses is closed, that being closest to. I'll call it the intersection of Chindon and Thirty Seventh Street. And limiting the easternmost access. To an entrance only.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, uh I have several questions here, Hannah, thank you very much, and thank you. Uh. I would like for you, if you're possible, bring up the picture where we were further back so we could see where the parking is. Behind the building.
Like a, a full aerial?
Uh that, that'll work, that, that one will work just fine. First of all. Uh before I ask you any questions, I, I wanna make. Fair that, so all of us knows what we're looking at. As. That other commissioners know. I'm sort of an expert on this silly street. The property line. Is. Where you see the power pole. That property line is in the right-of-way. That belongs to the highway district. Property line is on the inside. Of that power pole. And it looks to me like the property line, obviously I'm not, I don't have a surveyor out here. But one part of the building that's, it's sort of bluish. The edge of that building is right on the property line. And. So that being that. My question to Hannah is. How? Can we? Well, I guess the first one is, do we have a requirement? For them to put trees on Osage and landscaping? In here?
Uh yes, Commissioner, we do.
And that's in accordance with our, our standard requirements that we have, is that correct?
That is correct.
In that area where those vehicles are parking right now. Is that possible? To put landscaping in there, including trees?
Uh Commissioner, I do not have exact measurements, but I would. Anticipate, uh no, there would not be a good turning radius.
Okay, I think that, and I was gonna ask you where, if you knew where the air conditioner was, but there was another picture. And I think I know where the air conditioner is, the air conditioner is right by that little tiny building. There, no, there it is, there's the air conditioner. Um. We'll wanna talk about that later, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um so looking at that same picture. If. The applicant were to plant. Even with substitution, tree shrubs, class ones, whatever not, in the. Dirt parts and then. Use planter boxes to essentially be the barricade to close access, would that get close to the required percentage, or is it? Impossible to get to that requirement without. Busting out sidewalk, essentially, to find dirt, I just don't see a lot of dirt.
Yeah, um Commissioners, so I did not have an exact um square footage landscape. Plan uh to work off of, so and at the end of the staff report. I kind of roughly. Measured out on our GIS system what that square footage would be. Um the issue with, even if we counted these. Dirt gravel areas that currently exist as the landscaping, it cannot count towards that five percent requirement. Um due to a provision in there saying perimeter and landscaping in the setbacks, it cannot count towards the five percent requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Alright. Thank you very much. Alright, now we will move to public testimony. And we do have three. Sign-up sheets. So first, uh we'd like to hear from Corey Perry. Thank you, and again, please state your name for the record.
Hi, Corey Perry, eleven thirty, West Yosemite Drive, Meridian, Idaho. I also am working on behalf of the tenant on this property. Um. And wanna clear up just a couple of your questions that, because I have been at the property, that dumpster belonged to the previous tenant. That was in the building and is no longer on the property, so we are open at this point to putting. The trash enclosure wherever it best fits and working with you to get that enclosed, to have it screened properly. Um so that was one of them, and. The other one, yeah, the earlier you had asked about Osage, there is no room on Osage to. Put anything and still be able to use the parking at the back of the property. And I guess just any other questions that you might have, cuz I was out there again today taking a look at the property. And Hannah, just a quick question for you, so. I was reading the ACHD thing too, they. Do have, we do have to close both on Chindon, or we can get by with closing the one on Chindon and the one on Thirty Seventh.
Your chair, um do you want me to respond directly?
Sure, thank you.
It was just a little, there was different couple of places reading it differently.
Um so the ITD comments had provided two different. Options, it was. Along Chindon, it's either closing of both access points or closing of the one closest to Thirty Seventh Street with the one. Further east on Chindon. Um becoming an entrance only, so right in only. And then ACHD's comments said that there needs to be the closure of one of the access points closest to Chindon.
Okay. Alright, just wanted to verify on that, cuz like I said, I read it a couple different times in multiple reports, so. Um but no, that's, that's all I had, just wanna clarify a couple things, and then on the, yes, and on the landscape plan. That we did have the little stars, somebody said the little stars and buckets and things you have, so the little stars and the buckets are the best we could do to create flowers. For the planters. And again, at this point, we had planned on just closing the one access point, so the flower boxes would go there to add landscaping. With the additional closure of Thirty Seventh, the same flower boxes will be used to close that space as well with flowers to block off that access point.
Alright. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I do have that prompts a question. According to what you said, and, and Hannah explained it very well what the issue. With regard to the closures are. That so. If we did it in accordance with your plan. You would put these boxes where the two entrances are being closed, both on Thirty Seventh and Chindon, is that correct?
Correct.
If we stuck with the requirements, and I'm not saying that we. We won't, I'm just trying to inquire. The size of boxes that you would put on those two closures. How many bushes? Could you put in them if you weren't putting flowers?
That's a good question. Um. But I'm sure you've been down Chindon lately, you know, there's those great boxes being built, planter boxes. On the south side of the street that somebody is selling. Um of which. Provided they're large enough to support bushes. We could put some of the bushes in there along with some foliage and. And flowers in those to create some bushes as well, they're large. They're. Not something you or I could pick up. So, um. And I think that along the access point, especially the Chindon access point, we could probably put three of those. Large planter boxes. And then the Thirty Seventh Street access point is, is a smaller access point, we'd probably be able to accommodate two of those type of planter boxes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much. We have another sign up, Darcy Flazak. Alright, good job, thank you. And then Ms. Nelson, I see that you signed up as well, are you ready just to do your rebuttal?
Um. I, I think.
So let me, let me just make sure that there's no further, cuz you, you signed up, I just wanted to make sure that there was. Uh no one else, so it's, she wants to. Okay, yes. Is it Sylvia?
Sorry, I'm not signed up and I apologize for not being there, it's my granddaughter's birthday today. Um I just wanted to just address the closures. I really feel that closing both of the access points, and I completely understand closing off one of them. Look, you know, we're, we're a growing city, it's, it's, it's. Going wild, and there's a lot of businesses coming into Garden City, I totally understand closing one of those access points. But to close both access points on Chindon would really devalue that property, and also having been there for so many years when I ran my business. If you're slowing down, if you can't make a turn getting off of Chindon, it really does actually slow down the traffic. A lot more, not having an access point off of Chindon, because now you're slowing up the traffic, you've gotta make that right turn to get on to Thirty Seventh. So for us, and, and having run our business there for so many years, you know, we obviously use those access points. And I completely understand why ACHD and ITD and everybody wants to close. At least one of them, and I think that would be fine, but I think closing both of those points would really be detrimental to the traffic flow, honestly, more so. If you've got customers coming and going, but also it would really devalue the building, because part of being on Chindon is part of being on Chindon, like it was a great place, it is a great place. And, and, and as everybody knows, we do get so much traffic and customers coming off of that traffic flow. And, and off of that area, and so I just wanted to say that, I understand closing one of them, but I would really like the commissioners to take a look at. Leaving one of those access points open and closing one on Chindon and one on, on, on Thirty Seventh.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild?
Sylvia, you ran the business there for a long time, you had trucks coming and going off of Chindon. My question is, if there is. And when I say coming and going off of Chindon, entering the property and exiting the property from Chindon. How would we, as a commission, best? Ensure. That somebody who picks up their vehicle there doesn't exit back out on the Chindon if we leave one of those open?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question, I think part of that's gonna have to be, you know, if we have that one entranceway, we could also paint some arrows, right, I mean, a lot of. Different um organizations and companies have arrows that kinda show the flow of traffic, you come in this way, you exit on the back alleyway, and then you come back around. And honestly, that does make a lot of sense, I think, I think if you just kind of have arrows, or you could even put up signs that say entrance only, a lot of companies have that. And we can certainly do that and put up a couple of signs that say entrance only, exit this way, also I think that. You know, when, when you're, I mean, I mean, I think, and, and I know Darcy, I mean, I've kind of met her and I, the new tenant that wants to come in. I think it would be the onus on them as well to just tell their clients, hey, we need you exiting the back way, but you can certainly direct people with arrows and signs saying entrance here, exit this way. And honestly, I think that's a great idea, and it's a great question, and I think it does make sense to have them come in. On Chindon and then have them go out either on Osage or off of Thirty Seventh and then come back into the flow of traffic.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, is there anybody else from the public that would like to testify on this matter?
Just one more thing.
Okay.
Sorry, I just would like one more comment, as far as the beautification goes, I, I'm all about it, and I think it is great. It is very difficult there, and I had the same issue, and you're right, I ran the business there for, for many years. Um it, it's really tough because we don't have irrigation there, it's never been brought in. Um to, to do that, we'd literally have to disrupt the entire asphalt system to get water out there. And to get that done, that's why we had someone hired that came in and maintained that. We can make that place look great, and, and I don't know if any of you remember it when I had Clearview, but we did have it, I mean, it was in, in great shape, and unfortunately, when the tenant that. Bought from me took over, that dumpster is theirs, by the way, I think they just abandoned it and didn't remove it, we can have that taken off. More than happy to put back in planters, and actually in those dirt areas. Um we did have shrubbery, we had bushes planted there, and they were great. I do have one question, and that is, when I did apply and I had my permit there. Though, those dirt patches, we did have bushes planted in those, that did count toward our what, five percent, did that change? Is that something that has changed?
So Hannah, I don't know whether it's really relevant for the hearing or not, um cuz we're talking about this matter, uh if we could still just. Please wrap up your comments and keep it.
That's it, yes, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else from the public um here to testify, have any? Anything? Nope, alright, thank you, we'll close the public testimony. And we'll go back to the applicant for a rebuttal. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Alright, hearing none, then we will move into the discussion with the commissioners. Commissioner Brown.
Okay. Uh let's cut to the chase, and the first thing I wanna talk about is. Uh, let's cut to the chase. And the first thing I want to talk about is access. Uh, I absolutely agree. I don't get me wrong. I, I've actually studied it. I know. Why the requirements, why they're trying to close them. I think that it will be very, oh, I want to commend all of you. I want to thank you for bringing your business to Garden City. I think it's important. And, uh. So, and with regard to that. I think that we should. Uh, do the one option that eight I T D left us with doing, and that is. Require only the closure of the access on Chindon that's closest to Thirty Seventh Street and leave the other one. And, and it will have to be, uh, uh, coming in only. It'll be an entrance only. And we should put a requirement that that be marked with signs on both sides of that entrance. That they put signs there. They can say entrance only. And. That the others, when you go down there, uh, so anyway, that takes care of the entrances and what I think we should do about Chindon. And I T D gave, gave us that option. So we will be going along with. One of the things that they said was their condition. And so we'll be supporting I T D, which I think is important. Now on Thirty Seventh Street. Uh, we actually don't need and didn't be given a choice. The fact is what we do on Thirty Seventh Street. Is I, is A C H D controls that. And we'll have to put, as Hannah recommended. A condition in there that's not they had written because they were late. That didn't help. I, I was not pleased with the fact that A C H D was really late coming in on that. And we need to thank Hannah for persisting on getting that in for us. That particular entrance. I don't think it's necessary for us to say that that's only an exit only. I don't think it's necessary on that particular street, whether they come in or. If they're coming in and they're going to the parking places that are in the back or on the side. And there are. Uh, there are on the side. If I'm, I would like Hannah. We probably, probably to talk about this, we need to have the overhead shot that shows the whole thing. Uh, when you see that, you can see where the parking places are. That they're counting on it. That, that one will work fine. Uh, if that, that shot is, is perfectly fine. Uh, but if you look on this end, if it's in the shadow, but there are. One, two, there are three parking. There, right there. Those are parking places. And then that outer area, but the, it's going to have to be a traffic way. Because the cars that come in from the front, they're going to be coming in on the east entrance, which is. Right there. That's the one that's going to be left open, but they won't be able to go out that way. So they have to go underneath that awning. Come around there and that's going to be a traffic route. Um, but we want to leave that. So. Uh, what we're going to do there, I don't see a necessity for them to really put signs there. Some of the others may think different. And then. I think that takes care of the access issues if we, if we take that and Osage. Because the Osage, the way it is, is pretty much going to stay the way it is, I think. Of what they're. All right. The next item, uh, that I have on here that I want to make my comments on has to do with screening. I think that. We, I think where that dumpster has been in the past is probably the best place to put it. Other than if we wanted to leave it so that they had to do it, they will have to put it inside a building and then drag it out. But if we enable them to keep it on there where it is, I think we should do like what we did last week. And not require any kind of screening because there's not enough space. When, when you look at the requirements, when you put screening around them. Then they, they have to have a certain size so you can open the gates. That's, they gotta be gated. That's what the requirements are from Republic are. And that will result in putting a bigger thing. They already don't have enough space back there. And I think the same thing is has to do with A C unit. I think that we should just let it stay like it is, and it doesn't need to have something put around it. They don't need to go do that. And the justification for it should be the same. That you wrote last week with regard when on the one where we dealt with the motel. We put some language together that had to do with Stockton. And mentioning that there, it minimum right away, there's almost no room between the building. And that, and there's not room to properly put them around those. And we can justify a waiver on that basis. And that gets us to the issue on. On landscaping. And there I'm partly. I don't think that they. Should be required and, uh, maybe we'll have to talk to the staff a little bit. Put landscaping on Stockton. There just is no room there and you can see that at what they say. If we require them to put landscaping in there. And. Remember, even if they put the dumpster inside, they gotta have a place to pull it out to for the, the, the trash truck to come to. So you can't put landscaping there. There's just no space. And if you're going to maintain any parking. So. Osage. I think we need to justify just not requiring it on Osage. And that brings us to the other part, other planning areas. Those other planning areas. I think we need to see ourselves clear and see if we could. I believe. Now remember, the one on, we're looking at Thirty Seventh Street. The entrance that's closest to Chindon will be closed and they can put a planter box there. Those other two areas that are there, like the one in the corner and that. I suspect that they could put some class one trees in. But I don't think that you want to be putting class two and three trees in. Uh, yet those, they, there's not enough space there to do that. And I'm not Horc Cobb, Cobblist. And then out in the front. Where they're gonna be. The one entrance on Chindon. Is going to be closed. As you can see, it's quite a wide one. So that's going to have some kind of planter boxes in it. Which. Would probably if the, if we stick with that, with what, what the applicant wants to do. Those planter boxes probably should just have bushes in them. And then. There's a little party, a little planner space right there along the sidewalk there on Chindon. I don't know. Maybe we can work something out where we give the power to the staff to talk to them and see what they can do about putting. A couple of smaller trees in, but I don't see how you can put class two and class three trees. Chindon without making them widen those spaces out. And if you take out and widen that area besides having to tear up the asphalt that's there. It will make it so those parking places are not possible. On the end of the building because that has to be a traffic, a place for cars and trucks to go on. So I guess I didn't help us much with landscaping. So anyway, that's my thoughts. And other than that, we ought to recommend approval. We ought to approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with most everything that Commissioner Brown said and have a lot of the same comments. Um. I'm in agreement with. Closing. Also, thank you for coming to Garden City. I agree. You said that too. Like, I appreciate you guys bringing your business here. And want to make it work for you the best way possible. And it is a, it's a bit of a difficult, um. Location as far as like adding landscaping. With the access points and everything. I like the idea of, um, allowing. The access point on Chindon for the entrance only. And. I'm just wondering if like the planter boxes can be solid and not, I don't know. We didn't talk about it, but if they're circular or solid, so I think it's always better along Chindon. Um. Yeah, I'm also in favor of leaving any landscaping requirements on Osage because there's just not room there. I'd like to see the dirt areas that currently have weeds in them now, beautify it as much as possible. Um, I don't, I know, but we're saying that doesn't count towards the. Five percent that needs to be, um, landscaped, but I think that'll add a lot to it, just with the greenery and, um. And that, and also the big planter boxes on Thirty Seventh, I think that'll. Create like, like there'll be more appealing visually, especially going around that corner. I do think too, I, I don't know. When I think about trying to pull a dumpster out every week, it just seems like a lot of, kind of heavy, you guys. It, I'm okay with leaving the dumpster right there too, and not having it screened and not having HVAC screened through the space. I mean, Osage is a really. Difficult street. They have to have those requirements in this particular setup for the building. So. I'm, I'm in favor of approving it and. I do think also the arrows should be painted. And we have signs, put up arrows and signs for the entrance only area, like Jordan, people were to go. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Wild.
Thank you. Um, I. If, if my question didn't give it away, my primary concern is once we. I, I would suggest, and I will support. Closing the two accesses at the corner as we've been talking about. But I think that creates a problem at the Chindon access for the property. And the problem it creates is limiting. Exit on the Chindon. And I think it is dangerous to exit on the Chindon. And, and I, I, I would. Support. Um, and would even include it as a condition, um, to paint. Arrows that it is entrance only. And to add a sign that says to a departing customer, no exit. Now, so if that happens, then. Egress from the property. As we've already talked about, goes under the car, Kent already talked about this, it was under the carport out and around the side. Where there are two parking spaces on the end of the rectangular building. Maybe they can stay, maybe they go. If I am the landlord or the tenant, I would want them to go for safety. Uh, and that assumes that there's still enough parking. I didn't count the number of spots, but I think there is plenty of parking if you lost those two spaces to add more. Opportunity for safe egress at that second Thirty Seventh Street exit. Yeah. So where the. Where the white car is parked. I mean, there's probably, you know, from that angle, it actually looks. There is enough room, but, uh, from, from an aerial, it didn't look like that. So, um. I, I would not support making that a condition. I would, uh, suggest. That the landlord and tenant look at that, uh. When those two access points get closed. Yeah, right, right there. It looks pretty narrow to get a lot of cars in and out or out of that spot. So, um, screening the dumpster, I think if the, uh, I think the solution that Dre pointed out. Is a good one to keep it inside. Um. If it's not inside, it should be screened and I would support a condition to screen it if it's out by the pole. Uh, the A C I don't think needs to be screened. It's up against the building. It's back on Osage. It's out of primary public view. I, I think that's a little much. Uh, landscaping, I would be supportive of planter boxes and, um, the, the two or three times. Code, uh, uh, issue so that they don't have to put trees, but they can put planter boxes. And shrubs or other plants, uh, to fulfill that code requirement. And those are the only three, three things we need to talk about. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Commissioner Brown.
So I'm curious. So are you, uh, what you're saying? You're, you're saying you would support the planter boxes on these planning areas, but no trees? Shrubs everywhere?
I, I don't, yeah, yes.
Commissioner Brown, any further questions for Commissioner Wild?
No, he just answered it.
Okay. Commissioner Wilds. You good? All right. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with most of Commissioner Wild's points. I think the keeping the access open on Chindon with clear signage and, and I think painted arrows is a great idea. I think solves that problem. I agree on the, uh. Dumpster being inside are screened and I also agree with the A C does not need to be screened. And I, I do agree that it causes issues with operation if there's too much around it anyway. Um, on the landscaping, I think that. The combination of planter boxes and shrubs. Is the most doable option. Um, I think without irrigation, planting trees is just a losing battle. It's ideal, but. I think just they're going to die. So, um, without requiring, putting in a full irrigation system, which would require. A massive overhaul of the site, um, which, which hopefully is a future plan, but. Working with what exists there and not putting. An undue burden on the applicant. Um, I think a combination of, of shrubs in the area where there's. Dirt, um, those shrubs can be in planter boxes or in the dirt, whatever really is the best for watering. Um, with a combination of additional boxes, um. Used to block off the access points. I also agree with, um, Commissioner Shepherd. I'm not as concerned about how we get to the five percent, whether it's in the, the, um. Setback or not a setback. I think just the maximum amount that can be achieved with the space available. Um, is what I would be, would be looking for.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Kim, uh, prompted another question then that followed this. This is also for her and Hannah. If I understand what you're saying is. And so my first question is to Hannah. If I understand what Hannah said. The requirement is. If we have bushes or trees, requirements for automatic irrigation system. So we need to talk about. If what you're proposing and what the. Uh, applicant is, it would not be an automatic. It wouldn't fit that. So we need to talk about. Uh, we, is it possible to waive that requirement? I guess what we need to. Yes. At least I get, need to get some instructions from Hannah or Jenna, I think.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, I, I have some questions for Hannah too, somewhat along the same line. So I don't, I don't know Hannah, if you want to. I can answer, ask you those questions too and see how they align with Commissioner Brown's.
Let me write down the first.
Well, maybe it is an automatic, it could be automatic. I suppose if, if they have, hire a company that, that's put it in the contract that they could kind of let it give it late, that would be automatic.
Well, and I, I think it gets a little, the question of whether if it's in a planter box, does it count as? A shrub. I know I'm getting existential here, but, um. You know, if it doesn't have a root system in the ground, I would say it probably doesn't require irrigation system. Um, so where the shrub is may make the difference.
Yeah, so.
I bought you a few minutes.
So my question involves condition number four, almost in, in its entirety. And if. If there's even any way to achieve the five percent since all of this is almost going to be all in the setback. So whether or not it's even applicable in that condition.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so. I don't know off the top of my head for a waiver to essentially edit that. Um, that clause in code requiring that the five percent landscaping onsite. Um, cannot be in the perimeter or the setback. Um, so it would need to be elsewhere on. Um, so it would need to be elsewhere onsite, and typically how I describe that to potential applicants is it's. Making inside of the site pretty and not just like the right of way in the setback area. And, and then as far as the automatic irrigation goes, the commission has in the past come up with. Um, creative interpretations of what that might mean, um. And I don't know of any examples off of the top of my head per se, but, um. That, that could be up for discussion as far as how to interpret that here tonight.
So I, thank you very much for that answer, um. I still don't know though, if con- condition four would even apply, or we'd have to waive the entire condition, because. We're saying that the landscaping is going to remain in the setback. So, we're not going to achieve five percent regardless. So, Commissioner Smith, were you? Do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, I, I think this may be a question for Hannah, but when we talk about landscaping, could that include? I don't know, clay pots with flowers in them, I mean, is that a broad? Categories, so if they sprinkle beautification kind of throughout the property, is that a way to, to get there?
Um, Commissioners, yes, that, we have allowed for that in the past.
I don't think anybody has suggested that Osage is gonna get planted, right, anything?
No, absolutely.
Planter boxes and trees.
Yeah, they're, they're, you're not gonna put anything along Osage. Yeah, if you put anything there at all, you're, you're gonna take away, uh, you already suggested that they. Might lose those three parking places on the end that you can't see. And you'll lose all of those on the backside of the building, over on the other end of the building, the building's right on the property line, so there's. Nobody can ever park there, and where the truck is right there, if you go to their building, that's one of their overhead doors. Which they have access from that side to probably a maintenance bay, I haven't been inside, but I've walked. Hundreds of times past this very building and walked down Osage hundreds of times, so. And that, there's a little building there, there's no place there to park, so I, I agree, and. We're pretty much saying, other than they might put some small planter boxes close up to the doors or something. But, that'll be in the way of the sidewalk there. So what we're talking about is, we're talking about these areas that you can see. Plus, planter boxes were up close to Chindon where they closed this access, and the same thing around the corner. Right, and if you look on it, there are a couple of small places on Chindon that are like this. And, that's where it's gonna be, so, whatever we decide to do. It's really a difficult, if we do, if we do more than that, we make it impossible for these folks to run a business, in my opinion.
So with that being said, so I agree with fellow Commissioners on access, I do believe signs and. The ground markings would help screening, I'm fine with no screening on the dumpster or the HVAC. I think my main condition, concern would be just how to draft a code compliant. Condition for the landscaping, and we're talking about landscaping that's potentially in the right of way, and that's requiring street trees. And knowing that, we're probably not gonna meet any of that. What does that look like, just in a motion so that we can actually enforce it, and then how do we come up with some sort of? Standard that we would ask the, the occupant to abide by. With watering, my, my, I think my greatest fear is driving by next year, looks pretty this year. We get to sign a contract, no one cares, they'll die, or it's too expensive, right, or it's too hot. And then it just goes to waste, if you've seen it here, I mean, what we're looking at is a perfect example of what happens, and with a change in tendency. That's what's gonna happen again, so, and if we're not going to require landscaping, or I mean irrigation, then it's gonna keep dying. Unless someone's really adamant about it, so. I don't know, this is a perfect answer.
Come day and then we'll get treated up, that's, what's more likely to happen. But you're right, that's where we are now.
Are there any further comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a comment based off Kim's comment, Commissioner Smith's comment. About, um, maybe adding more planters, because I was thinking, oh, and sometimes when I'm in cities and I see hanging planters, I think they're so beautiful. And it doesn't take up space on the ground as much, and so that might be another option to bring it up to the five percent. But the same situation applies, someone's gotta water that and stay on top of that. And when, I guess this is a question, when we were talking about the automatic irrigation before, that can be either on city water, we're not talking about the fairview acres. Irrigation, right, just any kind of water.
Just a water source, but the pro- problem with that. Fairview Acres irrigation not access to this site, so if you're gonna put an automatic sprinkler system in this. First thing you're gonna have to do, if you're gonna, you're gonna trench in that asphalt. At least, looking at this. Two lines coming out to this corner, one up. Or the other corner and a couple in the front, you're gonna try, that's all gonna have to be repaired. And put back in, it, put an irrigation system in those places, then you're gonna have on the asphalt. Or concrete, some planter boxes, which would be. Well, you could, you can attach them, but it would, it would cost you a bunch of money and. So, I'm thinking if you. Are we, are we thinking that what? I think that what we're fixing, we're talking about doing, number one, it sounds to me like we're talking about waiving the tree requirement. And the landscaping. To the extent of what we do require is gonna be in the setback, okay, what we do requirement. So we, we're talking about require, I think, going ahead and tell them they can put their bushes in. They put bushes in, in these areas that were planted at one time, and plus. I think they have a good fix on the, uh, putting these large planter boxes as a way of cutting. Cutting, cutting that off from where the accesses are, and. They're gonna have to be watered probably by them hiring somebody, so I don't think we're gonna put a requirement on them to put up landscaping. And, the number of bushes. Since we're already waiving the overall requirement some way. I think that we're gonna say that number and the types that that. That they're gonna come in and they're gonna talk to our staff, and they're gonna. And the staff will have the authority to say, yeah, that's enough bushes, but not make him. Uh, go and make any more planter areas beyond the ones they already have. And except to the extent of where they put in these, these boxes that they're gonna buy. That are gonna go where they're closing the accesses, some kind of wording to that effect.
Which, according to their landscaping plan, I think. You know, using the little green stars and little blue circles, they're gonna have more opportunity to add planter boxes.
Yeah.
At that thirty seventh street, so they are probably gonna be pretty close on that, um, and. If we're waiving the five percent requirement, I think we can also, looking at the city code. Um, which just requires, um. Automatic irrigation for whatever the required landscaping that we condition the project on, so if we're not acquiring. Five percent, then we can also. Address the automatic landscaping or the automatic watering, so.
Well, let them take care of that with a contract.
Yeah.
They're gonna have somebody to take care of, right, it says that, that, that they'll be obligated, since they're not doing that. To have an arrangement where they are watered regularly or something like that, wording to that effect.
Any other comments?
Why don't you see if, if the attorney there could make a motion?
I will move approval of CUP FY twenty twenty four dash six. Uh, and. Include the conditions set forth in the. Uh. In the decision document, to include, uh. A closure of the two access points, uh, at the corner of Chindon and Thirty Seventh, both on the Chindon side and the Thirty Seventh side. Closure to include, um, closing off of those access points. The access point that will, um, be allowed to remain open under the CUP will be the further wet, uh. Further east access point, which will be, uh, an entrance only to the property and not an exit. And, the conditional use permit should include no exit to Chindon from that entrance. And I would add a requirement for a no exit sign facing the interior of the property. And also to include, um. Paint upon the asphalt to suggest to motorists that they are only allowed to enter and not to exit from that point. Uh, dumpster screening condition, um, I would only make a motion to include screening of the dumpster if it is. Exterior to the property, uh, which the applicant has suggested it will not be. The, uh, HVAC or HVAC unit does not need to be screened in my opinion, so I won't include that as a condition in the motion. And I would include a, a waiver of the five percent landscape requirement, uh, as we've discussed herein to include. No, uh, automatic irrigation requirement.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wild, that was.
You wanna add something about bushes in the, and in the planning areas that are existing?
Yeah, yeah, sure, as part of the motion, I, I would include, uh, substitution of, of bushes in accordance with city code. Uh, to substitute bushes, um, I'm probably not saying that right, um, class two or three. Uh, bushes and plants to substitute for the tree requirement.
Motion from Commissioner Wild.
That makes sense to you?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Brown, further deliberation on the matter. All right, hearing none, we'll take it to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, those have it, or ayes have it, congratulations, been approved for your CP with the conditions, and, uh. Staff will get with you on next round. Thank you.
There's some stock that's way here. Yes, that's why they are.
My assurance, whatever, anybody like a break, or are we good to keep rolling? All right, thank you very much, on to the discussion. Our A, Planning and Zoning Commission basics. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the Commission, um, I, um, your packet included quite a lengthy, uh. A PowerPoint presentation, and so I'll be quick in going through this, and that I think that most of you are fairly familiar. Uh, with the contents of the PowerPoint presentation or the presentation, however, please feel free to. To have me slow down and delve into anything, um, as I go through this, and we can. Uh, get more in depth than any, anything that you would like to. Um, so, uh, the Commission is dealing with planning and zoning, and so why do you plan and why do you zone? Um, planning really, uh, helps set the stage, um, for. How you want the city to, to be and, and what you want it to look like, and it's also, uh, typically, uh, very much an economical. Uh, thing to do, um, particularly in identifying, uh, your services, where, where are your sewer lines? Uh, when do you need to add additional lines, et cetera, and then why do you zone? Um, particularly zoning is a property rights protection, both, um, for somebody, individual property owner. And also that your neighbors can or can't do something that impedes on your property. Um, it, it has other, um, uses such as resource protection. Um, and it, it is a tool to implement your plan, the city's plans or whatever jurisdictions plans. Um, early on in my career, I, uh, went to a presentation where somebody likened. Uh, the city systems to the systems within a body, and that always, uh, stuck with me. Um, and so in a city or, um, any, any jurisdiction, it could be a county, state, et cetera. Um, the different systems that you have, you want those to be healthy, you want a healthy transportation system, you want a healthy. Sewer and water system, and then, and then if any of those are out of alignment. Say, and it can affect the whole. And so these are just some pictures of, maybe these were systems out of alignment, and then if it's done correctly. Um, really great places, uh, can be achieved. Um, back in the twenties is when, uh, when federally, uh, planning and zoning was really established. And, um, more what you care locally about is, um, in the state of Idaho. Um, Lupa, the Local Land Use Planning Act, really governs, um, of what the city can adopt. Um, and, and what the Commission is dealing with. Um, again, planning is like the picture on the puzzle box, um, that helps guide the community's vision. And particularly, the comp plan tends to be the big one that we talk about. Um, just a quick note that it's not legally binding in Idaho, um, but it should hopefully influence your decisions. And guide your decisions, uh, rezoning must be consistent, and the ordinances should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, there are certainly other plans that kind of layer that vision, and so. The city has a number of plans, regionally, there's a number of plans, um, that are in addition to the comprehensive plan. There are other, um, tools to implement at the plans, uh, ranging. From ordinances to policies to agreements, um, and where, uh, public investment is made. Um, there are two types of actions that you'll deal with, um, as Commissioners, and the first of which. Less of which are less legislative actions, um, that might be making recommendations on a plan or ordinances. Um, typically, and then the administrative actions are what you will, uh, what. The, the majority of what you do is, um, quasi judicial, um, actions and. The conditional use permit that you did tonight is one of those, and that is just a case by case decision, um. And then requiring the record in the, the hearing is the quasi judicial component of those. Um, in those decisions, those quasi judicial decisions, um, the Commission's really balancing. More than you initially might think, um, you're balancing the different, um, federal, state and local. Um, regulations, um, legal agreements, easements, previous actions. Um, city systems, the agency stakeholders, and effects on proper, mostly effects on property owners, I would argue. Um, and there are a lot of relationships related to those individual, uh, decisions, um. There, there's this board, there's the public, there's the staff. Um, there's the experts, there's the business owners or the developers, there's other jurisdictions. At time, you might be dealing with things where there's media involved. Um, and this is, this is not a new PowerPoint presentation. I I think I've directed all of you. Uh, towards this at uh, at least when you got on the commission. However, maybe, maybe it's been created since some of you have been on the commission. Um, but this is just a a um cartoon talking about, you know, how everybody perceives. Um, a a different proposal, so how the, what the customer wanted, what their engineer um understood. What happened um because of the the legalities, what the public understood and and what. Uh, what they really needed, all different things. Um, the mayor and the council, um, they set the the policy direction at the end of the day. Um, um, but they tend to focus on larger issues, and so this body has been deferred. Um, for you're the final decision maker on several actions. An example would be the conditional use permit. Um, tonight, and then you're recommending body on legislative um actions as well as um subdivisions of planned unit developments. The actions through this board should be consistent with the mayor and council's policies. And then there's another slide later on, but uh. This, this board does a great job, but you are required to give reasoned decisions that are compliant with the code. Um, and one thing I didn't mention that you are a, an appeal board on several uh matters. So staff level decisions, uh, you're the the appeal board, um, as well as. Um, in Garden City, you uh wear a unique hat of being the appeal board for um building. Decisions as well. And so say there's a dangerous building that is appealed, it will be appealed to you. Um, arguably, design review um committees are um. A function of the Planning and Zoning uh Commission in the state of Idaho. Uh, recently, um, the code was changed where instead of having a board, there's a consultant. Um, or a group of consultants that help staff make their design uh decisions. And so, um, Garden City is very unique in the way that that code is set up in the state of Idaho, so. What happens is in in um Garden City's world is we have. Uh, who were previously our design review committee, they're now our consultants, and they will um interact and provide. Uh, recommendations to staff and then staff makes a decision. Um, and this board has also indicated that items that have design review components. Um, like a planned unit development subdivision that you prefer. And we're operating this way that the the design review component is dealt with prior to it coming uh to this board for a decision. Um, certainly, design review sometimes uh definitely has an overlap. Uh, with use and parking is a really great example where parking is found in the design. Components, but it, there is a definite nexus on how that interacts with use. Um. Some of the other players, other jurisdictions, um, uh, ranging from the school districts. To transportation agencies, different utilities, um. Were required to notice them of decisions and give them the opportunity to respond and include those documents. Um, for your, for your um review in the record documents. Uh, the public has the ability to come and testify on almost everything that you're dealing with. Um. And the staff, um, we are here to work for you and to uh provide you the materials that you need. Um. And we do the legwork and the processing, and if you have any questions, uh, please always feel free uh to contact us. Um, at any time, not just during the the meetings. And the commissioner requirements in Garden City, uh, the city really follows the Lupa requirements or the state requirements. And I, you're all wonderful commissioners and appear to do all the things that you. Should do uh from uh reading the application and being engaged and courteous. And again, this is online, uh, if I'm going too quickly. Um. Uh, probably more of just a reminder, and again, a lot of this I I don't know that. You need reminding of, uh, but a conflict of interest is defined in state statute. Um, and that's really if you or anybody within your immediate family, so the second tier. Uh, your spouse, child, et cetera, has a financial um interest in an application. Uh, you should uh recuse yourself from acting on an application. Um. That would not affect quorum. Um, and and if you would like. Our city attorney is always available to uh help provide guidance. Um, you may, if you choose, provide a written statement. Um, but really, at the end of the day, the one thing that we do ask just for appearance sake. Um, is that you recuse yourself, not, you do need to recuse yourself, but that you leave the room for the proceedings. Um, bias on quasi judicial matters, you can't have bias on legislative matters, you can. Um, and so, um. You can state publicly that you have a position coming into the room. Um, and you can speak to people about legislative matters. On quasi judicial matters, um. You must make your decision on the whole record, and so you you can't have a decision in the back of your mind. Um. Until you listen to everything, the public comment and everything that goes uh through, um. It's through the the record. Um. And then ex parte communication, at times. You all might end up in a situation where uh you do have ex parte communication. And that might be that someone comes up to you and says, hey, you have an application pending, I. I really love the thing or I really hate the thing. Um, and you can uh fix that. Um, by just noting on the record that you did have communication and then it didn't bias you. And then really what that does is it, it cures the record by everybody in the same room having that same information. Um. Ex parte does not apply to staff. Um, that is something that um has come up in a recent application. Uh, that was discussed quite a bit by the public. Um, staff is allowed to speak to you as long as it's. Record materials code based. Um, members of the public, the applicant. And not have it all be on the record and all recorded, um, et cetera. Okay, um, complete the record. State code requires a few things um in the record. Um, your decision, uh, this is, um, is erroneous unless there's evidence to support it. Um. And there must be reasoned statements, um, and must be supported by code. And it must be in writing. And uh, there are a few other things that it must state. Um, the ability to provide a takings analysis, which is something that staff would do should the applicant. Uh, request that, um, the ability to appeal, that language needs to be in there. So there are a few things that need to be in there. And we do try to set that up to help, help you, um, when you're making your decision. Um, as you've noticed with every application that comes through, we provide a a written decision document, both. Affirming and dis affirming. Um, and so this is an example of something that you might. See that we would ask that you um pay close attention to. The decision documents, your document, you can change it. Um, if you are approving an application. Um, all of the standards should be in the affirmative. If there is. Anything that's in that uh isn't meant, any standards aren't meant. Even if it's just one, that would result in um a denial of an application. So if there's a denial of the application, you don't have to go through and make sure that every statement is dis affirming. There may be affirming statements within that, um, within your reasoned statements. And those reasoned statements, um, sometimes it can be a head scratcher to try to give you both. Of what would be an affirming or dis affirming, but we do try to come up with, well, maybe somebody might see it this way or you see it another way. Um, and so, uh, you certainly can add to delete. Um, those reasoned statements, they don't need to be what staff suggests. Um, and then we'd also request, what could they do to make an approval if you do deny an application? So it could be. You know, you're not needing this section of code. Um, and you could have your application approved. If it meets that section of code, you could do it by doing this, this or this. Resubmitting, et cetera. Um, you're also. Yep.
I know my motion was a little rambling tonight. In a perfect world, would you guys prefer? That we kind of identify on condition four, we want this, on condition six, what we would like to modify this. Does that help you more when we do that kind of more methodically?
I I think it really does. Um, some, sometimes you can. Just say, I mean, it it does can strike condition number four altogether, and then it's a very clear record.
Sure.
Um. At times. Coming from a staff uh perspective, if if we're trying to make sure that it's a nice clean. Decision document and you didn't go through and do that, I would say there are three attorneys in the room that, um. If if that were to be appealed all the way to the court system, a judge could very easily say. They didn't talk about that. You went in and you put the code sections in there afterwards and. And maybe that could be a gray area, so I think it's just a lot cleaner personally, but.
It's Kent's fault. He made me do the motion.
And then there, there are some guidelines like on the agendas and whatnot uh that we'll make sure that. If it's a regular meeting, we'll have it posted forty eight hours in advance, and if there's a change within twenty four hours. Um, the chairman will have to note or why, what was the reason, reason why we would have to change. Um, the agenda. Um. And and with that being said, I think that I do have another slide, but just know that, um. Anytime you convene with a quorum, um, or you're, you're discussing anything that's related to an application. Uh, we just appreciate uh with, with each other. Uh, we would appreciate that it's done in this room while while there's a recording going and and just keep us nice and clear. Um, one, one thing that could easily happen is, you know, staff sends out the. Um, is everybody available next week or just notes that there's a late decision that states this. That reply all button could be a little dangerous and and so, um, we do like to remind people, you know. Just don't reply all, so.
But even if we like reply all, that will be there, so like any kind of communication?
Um, yes, I I think how we would remedy that is we would, if we had time, we'd bring it in and put a part of the record and make sure that everybody knew that. We would do that, or that 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 had been discussed, and so it becomes part of the the public record document. Um, but there's another thing called serial meetings where you you don't want to have the serial meeting. And so tha- that's probably more to that than the than, um. The open meeting law, but you 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 just want to do that where the public, anytime you communicate with each other, um. About an application, you want to do it on the record, uh, to the extent possible, on the record, no to the extent possible, just.
Technically, just even replying, I'll be there is a serial meeting because it's us on an email saying things to each other. Nobody cares about that. If you weighed in on the, on this application, I think I'll do this. People care about that. That's, that's what they'll want to avoid.
Yeah.
That, that, there's the question then. So. When we reply, when Hannah sends it out. Are you saying that we should not hit reply all? We should just reply to Hannah?
Um, probably it's cleaner at the end of the day, I I I think is.
Your garden city attorney suggests that is accurate hits.
Or maybe the reply just to Hannah and copy Jenna have.
Yeah.
Okay. That'll work.
Again, nobody cares.
Well, I understand. Well, what we ought to, we ought to do what is right.
If someone did do like a freedom of information, I think that's still happening.
Right.
And those happen all the time. I can't tell you how many times in my tenure I've had. Emails that I've had to search through to to see if I said any keyword or I discussed any item. And so they, they are. They're out there, they're happening all the time. Um, I do reports to council on uh the FOIA requests. Uh, you know, on a number of things, but I would say our department averages on. Between fifteen and thirty a month of just somebody asking for some sort of information. And those who have worked for larger cities probably dealt with a lot more than that. But, um, so the city has adopted procedural rules. I didn't put in here that Lupa has some. Um, but then Garden City's code is eight six, um, that will guide, um. Some of the administration, and then there's a resolution. Um, that particularly talks about the order of hearings and time limits and some record keeping. And so again, back to some of the common mistakes, um, not giving a strong enough decision. Maybe there's some subjective uh matters in the decision. Um, maybe it's not clearly backed by code, which is the subjective part. Um, it might be in violation of other regulations, um, such as like the Fair Housing Act might be an example where somebody. Um, starts asking questions. It's not happened with this commission, but it is one of those things that definitely. Has happened and to people. Um. Meetings, we already brought up the reply all or a quorum outside of a scheduled meeting. Or ex parte communication, we already talked about. Um. Or not creating a a clear record, um, and we've already talked about those items too. Making sure to identify what could be done to be approved if there's a denial and making sure that the decisions have reasoned statements. And again, I am sure that this looks familiar to everybody, um, because. On the website, there is um Planning and Zoning Commission reference materials, and this is. Basically the same format that's been on on the website for some time. And here's a, a zoning slide, uh, separation of uses like that. And any, any discussion or question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Then I'll stay up here for the next one.
Chairman, are we ready for the next?
Ready, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um. As many of you know, um, Chindon is is a topic that uh we've. Discussed as the city for a very long time on, on how to improve Chindon. And also one of the things that uh is a challenge is to meet I T D's. Um, standards and Garden City code. And so over the years. And so over the years, um we've had dialogue and discussions uh with ITD and and some of their uh um policies have been challenging and, and recently, um and to Hannah's credit, she's been able uh to really um work with individuals over at ITD and we're working on establishing uh streetscapes that can be required during redevelopment that both meet the ITD's um standards and meet Garden City code. And so this document um is kind of going through the different areas and how those can be achieved. Um they've also been looked at with uh Public Works. And on the north side until Forty-Sixth Street, there's particular challenges on chindon. Because there's an irrigation uh underground irrigation uh canal and to the east end of towns. Uh so from Fairview to Forty-Sixth, and then there's a water line. So that street tree requirement is very difficult. Um and so, and then again, from adjust east of coffee to uh Maple Grove, there's an open canal that's also um challenging, I get, or drainage, Thurman Mill. And so those two items are uh addressed in these different potential streetscapes. Anything else you wanna say on that?
Other than there's, there is a difference between the north and south side of chindon, depending on which section you're looking at.
So is this for, when you say redevelopment, where you're, it's a full like redevelopment, not something that's existing?
Yeah, yeah. So we've determined it might be more of an undue hardship or a big burden on any um existing property owner that's not undergoing redevelopment, at least at a significant redevelopment. Um so it would definitely be like a scraped site redeveloping um or a significant improvement that meets the definition of what significant improvement means in our code. Cause that also triggers a bunch of other sections of code.
And then where is this at with uh ITD's approval?
Um they have, chairman, excuse me, chairman, they have um written it up and, and just typed it out. And then we have our responses back to make sure. So it's a back and forth where they will, their team that looks at the redevelopment uh permit applications, uh their supervisor will just sign it and that, that's how it will be implemented. There won't be a formal you know, memorandum of understanding between the two agencies. It'll just be staff to staff, so.
And then do you anticipate this being applied to the sidewalk policy?
Uh chairman, yes, we, we do. And then one thing that I, I think as we go through the code rewrites that we were working on, which we, we have on a list to continue with is um maybe really looking at uh codifying some of the nuances and maybe the sidewalk policy into a more robust code and, and dealing with some of the nuances that, that you've dealt with in the past. Um and perhaps something that you dealt with tonight too, I would suggest would need to be in there is when does something create an undue burden um and uh not be proportional? So then there's just a really nice code to look back and say, hey, you're hitting this code. We don't need to, to require this versus, I do appreciate the language. I think that's helpful. Um but it would be nice to have just a very clear cut code to help out.
Jenna, I, I would like to make a, a, a little quick comment. I, I really appreciate this, but one of the thing that complicates this whole thing and what our desire. I may have the breakpoint incorrect, but I think the breakpoint said Curtis. Everything west of Curtis, there is no drainage system in the road. It's an old so-called rural section, which in the rural section of road, the drainage is taken care of by the barrel pits. So it impacts us and what we are requiring people to do, uh the best example was probably when that we dealt with several years ago with Fred Meyer, when they were doing some imperiuments. Because since there's no drain pipe in the center of the road, you can't put curbs and gutters because there's no place for the water to go. So the water that is and a development can't drain onto the public right away. They have to contain all of it on site. So that's why you have to accommodate along with your sidewalks and that with a drainage swell of some kind along that area. And because that wasn't strictly enforced in the past, some of those places, they're elevated too high relative to the street to really make a drainage cell work properly. So it's, it's something we need to keep in mind when we're seeing them. And Hannah's aware of that, and Hannah and Jenna are both aware of this problem.
Uh chairman, uh commissioner, commissioners, uh Commissioner Brown brings up another point of this that uh we'd like to tell you about is we're working on a project with ITD right now for um funding for a drainage review of chindon. And so within the next year or so, we do hope to have a drainage plan for chindon in place, so.
Excellent. Are we on to discussion item C?
During June, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting regularly scheduled, the commission meeting falls on Juneteenth, which is a holiday. And so we are wondering if you would like to um reschedule that. And we do, we do have a availability either way. If you do decide to go that way, a week on the Wednesdays before or after. And then if you wanna do just a day before or after, um the eighteenth, we're scheduling this room would work, but the twentieth uh may be a little bit more difficult to reschedule.
I think you just said Jenna, twentieth won't work.
It's, it's more difficult. There is a, a legal clinic until after hours that's already scheduled. We could look to see if we could reschedule that though.
What did you say about the twelfth, the twelfth or the ninth, night, or the twelfth or the twenty-sixth would work for this room?
Yes, yep.
Twenty-sixth, I will most likely be in Virginia. So but like always, you know, we can carry on. If it worked better for the others, you know.
Are you in town the week before, the full week before?
For the twelve? Yeah. Well, at this point I am. So let me sort of explain. That is sort of tentative, but we own a house in Virginia and I have our tenants are leaving and because of a problem I have there, I have got to be there for them to check out. And that will either take place the week of the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth at this point. Right now, I've tentatively said it's gonna be the twenty-sixth, so.
I'm fine with the twelfth, I'm fine with twenty-sixth, and I'm fine with the eighteenth.
I would be fine with the eighteenth too.
Eighteenth works for me, as does the twelfth or the twenty-sixth.
It, I have a, I am on a nonprofit board that meets the evening of the eighteenth. But sometimes we end early, sometimes we don't. So we can take a chance and shoot for the eighteen.
Yeah, it sounds like either on the twelfth, eighteenth, or twenty-sixth, someone's gonna be absent. So we'll just have to pick one. You wanna, is it easier for you all to be on the same week of?
Yeah, what's best for you?
I guess Hannah might have an opinion.
Yeah, it's easier for me to keep it in the same weeks. That way the rest of the schedules are consistent as far as scheduling other applications.
I think that's what we ought to do.
Eighteenth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other items for discussion? All right, with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.